Well, why don't we get started? We're going to call the Tuesday, August 20th, 2019 planning permission meeting order. It'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. We've got, what, three? Ed?
Ed Perlinfine, Ann Pelteer, and Scott Simpson.
Okay, if you'll please note that.
Got it.
So let's move right into the meeting for May 21st. Any additions? Comments on that? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
We'll make a motion.
Or you want to look at it?
The minutes as written?
As written, okay.
For May 21st, right?
May 21st, yeah.
Oh, second.
Is that a second? I have a motion and a second. Any more comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the minutes for May 28th. What's your pleasure on that?
I have a whole bunch of things I marked down that were corrections that didn't make it on here, and I don't know how much it matters, I guess I'm asking that. Does it matter if they're not in the minutes that we could still make the change?
John? Comment on that?
You know, we don't call them Robert's rules, we call them Bob's guidelines. And so these are already approved minutes?
No.
They're not?
We're getting ready to approve them.
Sure.
So we're good to go?
As long as it accurately reflects what was said at the meeting.
Well, there were some things that were changed on our copy that didn't make it on the minutes.
Oh.
That's what I'm thinking about.
Copy of the code?
That's what I wrote down anyway, is that these are the changes we're going to make, and then it didn't make it.
Has the changes been made, though? They haven't been made?
I have not seen the changes in the new copy.
This is a work session.
It was a work session.
So there are minutes for a work session that hasn't been adopted?
I think, in my opinion, I think we're okay without needing to make those changes because they haven't been... They would need to be written down if those changes have already been made on the document, but what I'm hearing, those changes have not been made, so I think we're okay without that.
Okay, cool.
Okay. Did I hear a motion on that? Anyone?
We'll make a motion, approve the minutes as written.
As written?
For a work session, or make a motion.
Okay. I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any further comments? Okay, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. Approval? Aye. And opposed? Motion carries. The next thing on the agenda is old business. Do we have any old business?
We're going to approve the old code at the end anyway, so I guess that's what Forrest was saying. He was asking, what was the point of approving the minutes?
Why are we approving these minutes when they're not accurate?
There are some... They are somewhat of a record showing that a meeting occurred. Now, if you want to make them... Now, we have the record, it's an... We have an audio record of it, but if we want to go back, and my understanding is that there were just certain things that were not included, not as though it's a typo in there.
Yes.
Certain things were not included, so it just depends on how...
It's fine, it's fine, I was just...
It depends on how concise you want the minutes to be. Now, if you want them to be written verbatim...
But they're part of a public record now.
They are part of the public record.
And they're not correct.
No, well, they're not... Not everything that was said in the meeting is actually in the minutes, right? So certain things, we're allowing certain things to not be included in the minutes. One of those are, we believe, that certain suggestions were made, but they're not in the minutes. So I'm just saying, if you don't want to go through and put everything in there that you think was mentioned to be changed, I don't think it's going to detract from the accuracy of it. But if you do want to do that, you certainly may.
I'm okay with it.
That's fine.
Because to me, we haven't solidified it anyway, so we still have the right to change it.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
So these were just suggestions, but for example, if it... You had 1.2 was written in here, and there's actually 1.3, you want to go through and amend that, right? If... Well, if a record was incorrect, and maybe I misunderstood, I thought you said that certain things were not put in here that you thought should have been in there, not that they were incorrectly placed in the minutes.
No, that's true. No, that is true.
Okay. So if they are incorrectly placed in the minutes, then we will want to make those changes.
Yeah.
So whatever is in the minutes, you want to make sure it's an accurate reflection, but it's just that not everything needs to be in the minutes.
It's fine, carry on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Under old business, any discussion? Okay, then we'll go to new business. Discussion of several items in land use code with city planning director John Morgan. So we'll turn that over to John now, if you can lead us in that.
This has got to be one of the most well-deliberated codes ever. We've gone through, I think this is our fourth time going through this chapter. So the idea is that we want to move toward public hearing, and you're going to see, I'll forward these articles before that, so that you can approve them for the purpose of going to public hearing. If you're happy with the draft, you're presenting it to the public, that's what we're about. So this one, Article 1, is done, as far as we're concerned, for the purpose of going to public hearing, meaning your staff, and this is your last chance to go through it before hearing. And just remember, we've not adopted anything, we're not going to adopt it till after the hearing. This is just you saying, hey, we're satisfied with this, and it's good enough to take to the public and say, well, you can do that. You will get Articles... Article 2, probably no later than Friday, I'll send it to Jake, and he can send it out. Articles 3 and 4, which in some ways are a little more complex, will be another week or so before those are done. We'll send them to you, but assuming you want to do a review of Articles 2, 3, and 4, we'll need to set another meeting to come back and do that.
The packet we were given, is that replacing 3 in here?
Article 3?
Article 4.
I mean, 3.102, 3.4.
Okay, now, this is...
We've got it in here.
Yeah, what was... The request of me is to bring those access standards and those accessory structure standards to you in advance of seeing Article 2 or 3. That's just a little subcomponent of it, because those were points that you had spent a lot of time discussing, and it's better to hear from you tonight if those reflect what you want. And then we'll just plug them in, those articles, and then come back and also go.
So the driveway width and accessory building are things that we are asked repeatedly about, and we have the ability under our current code on the driveway widths to approve whether it's the city manager does, but we're not doing that right now. We didn't want to get your approval of this change, so we are hoping tonight, on the driveway widths and potentially accessory buildings as well, that you will get that language to where you want it to be and recommend adoption of that specific language to the council, make an approval, so we can let people know about it. So that is, for those few pieces, that's why you're meeting that tonight.
Okay. So we'll walk through these three different pieces tonight, and then we'll set another time to get back together to look at Articles 2, 3, and 4, and at that point, we'll be ready to set public hearing. All right. You've seen this many times before. Article 1, as it says, is the general provisions. It's just all the general stuff that talks about how the code's enacted, why it's here, that use of land has to conform with it. Yep. So should we just start on page 2, which is purpose and scope at the top? Walk through it, see if anybody has any concerns about it.
So our agenda started with the driveway and access spacing, then accessory structure, then Article 1. That's why they're giving a confused look, because Article 1 is like about halfway in. So if you want to start with Article 1, you can, but I put it in the agenda.
Which is the first one that's up?
Access spacing, then accessory structures, then Article 1.
All right. So forgive me. Let's go to 3.102.04, access spacing. These are the standards that you have seen, and have been well debated, especially on the idea of driveway widths. And this is pretty lenient, which is the way that you wanted to go on those widths, effectively almost just allowing almost a whole frontage to be used as long as it wasn't infringing on the setbacks on the side, on the neighbors, and on the... any intersection vision clearance areas.
So access spacing is meaning what? That's driveway distances between the driveway? What is that meaning?
Yeah, that is what it means.
Okay.
So it says there in that first table, for instance, down toward the bottom, local residential, access is permitted to every lot, you can't deny it, but you go farther up into those more significant roads, collectors and arterials, this establishes a standard for how far apart driveways have to be.
Minimum space.
And then the third, or the last column, is the spacing between intersections. So when we're laying out new developments in which new streets are being created, this reflects the spacing between intersections. In other words, your block length, is what that means.
So, John, so this table is no change.
That's what I'm seeing.
The only change here is the addition of number 3 at the bottom about circular driveways, because we've talked about that, saying circular driveways can be considered when warranted by safety concerns, in this case the driveway width shall not exceed the 20 feet.
And I know we've talked about that, and I'm not against it, but to me, this is really wishy-washy. And so for me to be okay with this here, I would want to hear what our criteria is for when we can have a circular driveway, and I haven't seen that. I also saw it down in here, too, that you have more verbiage about one, but I don't know when one would be okay and not. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think the intent was when you don't want people backing onto higher street roadway, and that's when we can... When we get down to, when we get to the other part about driveways in non-residential, so those are for arterials, what, you're expecting number 3 applies? Local residential, we'll get to that part a minute where we said you staff will leave so much frontage for parking, and then the rest of the driveways.
So this number 3 only applies to collectors and arterials?
Correct.
It should probably so stay?
Yeah, well, that's why the little footnote or...
See the number 3? I didn't understand that.
Okay, I misunderstood, thank you.
I'm not good with 15-foot wide.
Why?
Driveways can be wider than 15 feet to go into the garage.
Yes, this is where they connect to the street.
This is only for circular driveways on arterials or collectors. When you're going to allow a circular driveway, then each of those entrances can be no wider than 15 feet.
Why is it locked, why not? I want to know why. You've got a 200-foot lot, why should I have only 15 feet of width?
That's where it connects with the street, 15 feet off the street, not once you get on your property.
But even still, his point's valid, if he has 200 feet of width.
Because these are one-way. Circular driveways effectively one-way. So it's the equivalent of a 30-foot regular driveway, but it's just split into two halves. You know, we recognize that the greatest cause of accidents are turning movements, and that's what this concern is about, because people backing out of driveways or making turns near each other, that's what really contributes to accidents.
And I get that, because I brought that up as a danger, backing out like that.
So that's why this language is there, it says 15 feet, just to help keep... Well, effectively, what you would have, if you went to a full width, you'd have two-way driveways very close to each other there, and this really limits it to a one-way driveway, minimizing those turning conflicts.
The 300 feet between driveways before the next guy can have one?
On an arterial street.
Okay.
That's like Old Salem Road.
Okay, or concert, or woods.
Well, concerts or collectors, so that's 300. Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, if concert's a collector, wouldn't that be 50 feet?
Between driveways.
Yes, you're right, the driveways, I was looking at the intersection separation.
Well, so the only arterial we have is Old Salem?
No, only three drives and concert.
And what would be?
It's a collector right now, depending on its designation and on standards.
But it'll eventually be an arterial.
If it gets reclassified, but...
If we what?
If it gets reclassified.
So question to... How close can the driveways be to the next property line? How... Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, they have to maintain the same setback as the building.
That makes more sense than designated foot width, because you might have one piece property 400-foot wide, and the next one 150-foot wide, and not being able to spread it out, and you're not allowed to be close to the 400-foot one, like you say.
Well, I was just wondering how close they would be to the line, because we... I've seen nothing for criteria for this yet, so that's why I'm asking.
No criteria for the what?
For a circular driveway, what?
How would we decide?
Yes, yes. And what would the criteria be for allowing it, other than the fact that you just want one? I mean, I'm just asking, because I don't want to see us have a whole bunch of driveways. And then, two, how is this... This kind of morphs into they want a second driveway, right?
Yeah.
So are we just talking about arterials and collectors here, or neighborhoods? Because that's a whole separate thing.
Let's talk neighborhoods, because that's really what we're...
Yeah, they only want 25-foot wide driveways.
I'm not as worried about the others, because those are bigger pieces.
So if we're talking about a neighborhood that gets on the next page?
Yeah, C1A, the top of the page, single-family residents and duplex. As long as you have the... As long as you have two on-street parking spaces, and you're maintaining those side-yard setbacks, virtually everything else on the frontage can be a drive-way.
And if it's helpful in the graph picture.
So we discussed...
Oh, okay.
We discussed having 50% of your frontage... That was just words we used, but we discussed having 50% of our frontage being able to be a driveway, so that people have three-car garages, and they have an RV lane, they can have it four-wide, as long as they still have parking space.
We moved away from 50% at your last meeting, and it went to this.
And does this do the same thing? I guess that's what I wanted.
Yeah, it might actually end up on some larger lots, being bigger than this.
Well, if the majority of the lots are at least 80 feet wide, and they want two 20-foot parking spaces, that allows 40 feet. That is... Well, I would say 75 to 90 is the average in subdivisions.
Okay.
It's 80 minimum.
Okay.
Well, I've got a plot map at home, shows 75-foot lines.
So if you've got 80-foot frontage, because that's our minimum, right? So this is 80.
Do that as part of the parking angle.
Look it back to the...
So if you come in five feet from each side?
Make it real big, so we can see it.
Start.
No, I mean the numbers.
Pictures, you're right.
Let it go there.
The pictures were fine, the numbers are too small. She's an engineer, not an architect.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are too many lines here.
Get the kids' blocks out.
How's that?
That's better. Okay, so five foot in.
Five feet in for the property line, and the reason for that is, one, we don't want driveways continuing across multiple properties, and, two, every lot has weak holes that the rift rings come out through.
Every lot has to be what?
Has weak holes through the curb, where the rift rings come out and go out to, or we got it, for storm range. So if you bring your driveway all the way up here, you don't have any place for that to take place. So those are two reasons why we have the setback, and that's our setback on the sides for buildings. All right, so if you have... Let's see. So if you have two 20-foot spots, let's just make it simple.
Those 20-foot spots can include that five feet, though.
No.
Yes.
Why not?
Yes, I did.
No, that's a setback.
Oh, it could, I thought it was...
You can't.
But it's on the street, though, so it...
It's parking.
It can include that, okay, so this is the 20 total, right there.
Yep.
So you've got 40 feet plus five, 45 feet of left, so you've got 35-foot feet of driveway available.
Now, if you want to put a circular driveway in that 35 feet, why are you restricting it to 12 feet?
So if somebody in a... With a house here, whatever, wants to make all this 35, all this 35-foot driveway, they can do that. Or if they want to split this up between multiple driveways on the same lot, the only restrictions are this five feet here on each side, so you can have it like this. This is driveway, this is curb, this is driveway. So in that case, you've got to have 40 feet here, two 20-foot spots, so now you use 50 feet, and you have 30 feet left.
So that's where this...
So you have two 15 feet.
That's where this 12 to 15 feet comes from?
That's for collectors.
That's for collectors.
Now, I'm saying this is...
The numbers work out the same, you're right. The numbers work out the same, but that's not... This calculation isn't how we came up with the 12 to 15 feet. So this is in a neighborhood, right? If you have 100 feet of frontage instead of 80, and you do this, then you've got 50 feet left, you don't have 25 feet.
Right, but it still says for single-family residents and duplex, driveway can still just be 12 to 15 feet if it's circular.
For a lot less than 10,000 square feet.
Pardon me?
For a lot less than 10,000 square feet.
No, it says for a lot of at least 10,000 square feet.
Oh, on that one, yeah.
I'm looking at A, driveway's 1A.
Well, why couldn't you have a circular in this?
I see, okay.
You could, I mean, can you draw...
It's fine, it's fine. I was looking at two, I was looking at two back and forth.
Yeah, you definitely could do a circular.
Next one. On Arturial, Arturial Street, there won't be any on-street parking.
Correct.
So that... It's going to use any and all of that. Shouldn't have the 40-foot for off-street parking then.
Something like this, right? That's what we're talking about?
Good. Either way, straight driveways or whatever, you don't need that 40-foot of off-street parking on an arterial, would it not be me?
That's not applicable here, right? That's... This only applies to neighborhood streets.
On an arterial, you have to be 300 feet apart from your driveway. So sure, if you have a large lot, you can do a circular driveway, but they're going to be 300 feet apart from the intersection.
I was wondering about 100-foot apart.
On an arterial?
Well, we're not arterial yet, okay.
It's all 50 feet on a collector.
But what we're saying on a collector with this, and John, what's wrong is that, is we would say, okay, so there's another house over here, and they've got a driveway, their driveway and this driveway should be 50 feet apart.
Yep.
Right? But due to safety reasons, if we want to allow them to have a circular driveway on their property, they can have two, they don't have to be 50 feet apart.
In that case.
In that case.
So in essence...
Well, I think we've accomplished what we wanted. We've got the second driveway, we've got the circular, it's just smaller than we would like. I think we win at the end of the day.
Your cutouts are, you can go as deep as you want, as wide as you want.
Right, I understand the apron and the cut.
So in essence, you can have driveways 10 feet apart, is what you're showing me there.
On this, in this case?
In that case where you can have five feet and five feet, you could have, you could have driveways 10 feet apart.
On a joint and parterre, that's right.
Sure.
What do we have now?
Which we do now, yeah.
And in a residential neighborhood, that's not a problem.
Right.
There's just no parking there?
Yeah.
And that's why we're saying each property has to provide two on-street parking spots, so because you may or may not have that.
I think at the end of the day, we got what we were looking for.
It's just worded differently, but I think you're right, yeah. So basically, then, if you didn't have the circular, and you had 100-foot wide, you could have your three-car garage plus an RV slot, and that curb cut could be all the way across, right?
Is also two on-street parking.
As long as we still have 40 feet of parking.
Okay.
Yeah, and you can have 20 feet.
The circular driveways, number 3, where it says circular driveways can be considered when warranted, that's leaving a lot of gray, so is this going to be a staff decision that probably won't even come to us?
I've got another idea, I'll throw out.
No, the boss is already shaking his head back.
That's why I wanted more criteria.
Well, it's left gray, but I'm thinking that that's going to be something that we're not going to see.
Well, I don't want to see it.
It's an action.
I don't want to see it. That's why I want a little criteria, I don't want to see it.
What option would you just be allowed, period? Circular drive in lieu of a double drive? I think circular drives on arteries, as long as they're not more than 15 feet, then the spacing would be fine.
Yeah, I think that's what we're going with this, is either the single drive on an arterial or collector, or the circular drive, we're saying makes sense.
I think the way it's written, you're setting yourself up to have to make a decision that you really don't need to. We can do it now and be done.
I, yeah, I would suggest, though, that I rewrite number 3, to say circular driveways can be utilized in lieu of two-way driveways. You know, work out some language with each of those, curb cuts only need 15 feet wide.
So back to what I said earlier, was how does this morph into those two driveways people want? And that's what's going to happen.
The two driveways people want in the residential neighborhoods? Or...
I would say, yeah, because if a guy has his garage is on one side of that, but his RV spot's on the other side, he's going to want a second driveway.
We have some houses down here where the garage is on one side of the house, and the RV garage is on the other side of the house. They have two driveways right now, against our code, but they do have.
And people are going to want that down, down the line, too.
But I think as long as they still have the two parking spaces, we're allowing it with this.
Yeah, I think they're talking about probably 800-foot frontage.
Yeah.
They can still do two driveways, it's just have to meet the same requirements.
As long as we allow 40 feet of parking.
Then they're not going to be 26 driveways, they're not going to put driveways on the same spot.
And based on the way this is written, if you had 200 feet of frontage, you could potentially have three driveways. You can give flexibility for you to use that space as long as you add up to the pieces that are required, and you can't go less than, is it 10 or 12 feet on a single driveway?
I think it said 12.
So our prior codes said no second driveways, so this is changing that, right?
Yeah, you wanted a lot more flexibility.
But we're going to retain the 40-foot parking.
Yeah, you know, really what this does is it says, as long as you're keeping that setback from your neighbor, and you're providing those two on-street parking spots, do whatever else you want.
And lose some setback from corners.
Yeah, yeah.
And can't be right all the way up to the corner.
But Arturial and collectors don't have parking spots.
Right, so that doesn't know why it's only the...
But they have differences between driveways in lieu of...
26-foot versus, or the two, it's 26, right?
26 or 25.
Or 25 on arterials. Or two fifty on Arturio's.
That helps. Thanks.
Does that, we wanted to capture what you guys were looking for here and be able to start implementing this because a lot of people are reading. So that was, that was our goal.
It's a hot topic.
We had one couple who's been showing up here for every meeting, waiting for it to happen. They are, they're waiting for their second driveway.
Well, there's concurrence in this direction, then it gives them direction on how to look a driveway. Which is what they want.
But you're going to get some more criteria written down so that it's, no?
I'm going to rewrite it to allow it as an outright. There's no decision to be made. A person can choose a single driveway or a circular driveway.
Okay, alright. I just didn't like the squishy. I just didn't like the squishy.
Yeah, okay, so no squishy.
No, black and white, please.
Yeah, I like black. Are you anything else in this access spacing section that, I mean, you've seen all of those other provisions before, but you really wanted to see the language. What facing?
John, I just, are we on driveway, single-family residents and duplex, under C? And maybe we want to have a discussion about what is allowed here. Driveway shall be limited to off-street parking and the parking stores of recreational vehicles. And I wonder, do we want, so that's prohibiting boats, that's prohibiting everything else?
Of recreational vehicle.
Well, not the way it's defined back here. I go back to the definitions.
Maybe the definition needs to be corrected.
Yeah.
Where are you at for us, sorry?
On article one.
Oh, on article one?
Yes, starts on page five, definitions. So you're looking at recreational vehicles?
Yes, page twenty-six.
Page twenty-six, vacation trailer.
They're at the back of there.
Actually lived on a boat.
Yeah. And so I'm just wondering, my reading of this just eliminates, we can't park a boat there, or anything else other than an RV. Do you want to keep that restriction on there, or do you want to have the ability to park a boat or something else in there?
Yeah, in my mind, that was probably an inadvertent omission.
That's an E.
So.
I think I would change it to say a boat, comma.
Well, how about other recreational vehicles? Because people have ATVs, they have trailers, they park them on them.
Well, then, you know, they can be parked there, just as you could park a utility trailer in a driveway. It's just the boat, I think some people might object to, you know, a big boat in a driveway, and yet it's still bigger than a travel trailer. The point is to be clear that that counts. And it can go there, and you won't have people complaining about it. We're winning the complaint.
And we don't want them on the street.
Right.
Well, okay. So what we're saying, and I think I agree with what the chair says, we say off-street parking, we need to define of what? So you go into C, driveway shall be limited to off-street parking. So he's talking about, do you want to be able to store an ATV in that spot or not?
Well, I don't want a car up on Jax.
Okay, so.
That's a definition.
Yeah, and.
Well, I have a problem with the storage.
Because we just need to be prepared, if somebody comes into the city hall and says, my neighbor's got a boat on there, can he have a boat on there? Or my neighbor has this on there, maybe have that there. We need to be able to, specificity helps us.
Okay, so you have a twenty-foot, twenty-eight-foot driveway or whatever, and a person is parking their brand-new teardrop trailer there as their permanent parking spot for it.
That would fall under recreational vehicle, I would.
Right.
Okay. I would think that's good.
Well, it does.
You're good on that. But what about the other items?
Boat? People concur on the boat, but other recreational vehicles such as ATVs, snowmobiles.
To me, it should be behind a fence.
Why can't you move them back to the front line of the house and put them beside you?
See, this is a good question. I mean.
It should be behind the fence.
You can. If you folks want to do that, you can, we can write that in there, and you can.
I think that, I think we should put that in there because.
Janelle has some comments on this.
Well, it's good to have all this specificity in there, so we know what to enforce. How much do you want your city enforcing? A lot of home associations have these things required. It's not something we have enforced in the past, and it just, you know, it leads to more and more staff time and time that the city spent enforcing these things if we put it in the code. So it's up to you to determine if that's something that the city wants to police, but if it's in the code, we will be asked to police it.
Or do you want to leave it up to CCNRs and covenants?
We don't, we don't.
Well, you don't enforce that, though.
But nobody does.
And nobody does. Our neighborhood doesn't.
Our neighborhood doesn't either. And so I think we need to put in there an ASAP behind a fence. And then they can have whatever they want back there. It's a boat, or ATV, or whatever.
Well, I concur with you on that. What do you feel about that?
I know, you didn't like it. I'm sorry.
I don't dislike it. I just, I just want to make sure you know what other repercussions are.
I understand. But the thing is, is that most people will do the right thing. Okay? Most people will, or try to, and at least, and you know what, other neighbors around there will remind them, too. We have that where we're at. So.
Just be aware, each code enforcement thing, that we don't, you know, it takes staff time to go out and verify with the person who reported it, and then we send a letter, and we follow up, but they don't respond, and they get to report it. So over, again, if that's what's important to the city, to spend city resources on, you know, these things, each thing we add, I mean, this is talking about, one of these is probably multiple hours of work and attorney thing.
And then it gets to the point where we even have to get him cited and have to take him to court over in Lynn County Justice Court.
But what do we want our city to look like? So that's really what we need to look at.
There's another aspect, too. What about unlicensed vehicle? That people want to store in their driveway and forget to renew the license. See, there's a whole nother bag of worms there.
What you say in the details.
John private property.
I think as long as it's stored in the driveway and not on jack stands, I think that's okay. I mean, I think, I don't think.
I'm not a fan of behind the fences. We've kind of built a lot of this community on the idea of parking your RV alongside your house. And a lot of people have come here just specifically for that. I'm not in favor of the fence at all. I think if it's off the street, I like it alongside the house, but there's a boat or two in my neighborhood in the driveway, and I don't find it offensive. That's my two cents.
So without the road, it'd be a different story. Now you're in the public driveway.
Yeah, and that's covered by other parts of the municipal code.
But I do think recreational vehicle description might add an E and add boat to it.
Yeah, I would put it up at the top to say a boat, comma, or a vacation trailer, et cetera.
Okay.
Let's separate that out. Because A through D are making reference to truly a RV. So I want to distinguish that.
Why are you apologizing?
Sorry's not better, huh?
So you're putting that language under the definition of recreational vehicle?
Yes.
Okay. A boat, that would be an E?
He's going to add it in the top.
Okay.
Yeah, because A through D are referring to traditional RVs. We're still looking at driveways. Section three, point one, zero, two, point zero, four, access space.
So may I ask a question going back to this thing, please?
You're the one who started this.
I know, I am starting something. I know, and I apologize. I'm just anticipating. So the way I interpret that, if it is not written in here that it's permitted, then it is excluded. So what do you folks want the staff to do if somebody comes in and says somebody has their ATVs, two ATVs on a trailer, flatbed trailer, parked in their driveway? Get rid of them. They're not allowed in here. I don't think they're allowed in here, under that definition.
Yeah, I would read that into that definition.
I see that around quite often. I mean, that happens. How do you want staff to deal with that particular issue? We can't just ignore it and say, well, don't do it, or is that your intent that we do something about that situation?
That's why I wanted it behind a fence, and then we wouldn't have to deal with it. That was just my thought.
Right.
Yeah, no, no.
It's on ATVs.
I agree. In the perfect world, I mean.
I know.
You know, but.
If we were a gated community, I could see that. But we're not.
Well, and then that would be CCRs, right?
Right, yeah.
So do you want to allow something like that in or not, and just ignore it and just hope that we don't have to deal with it very often here?
Are we adding boats?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're adding boats. Also add ATVs to it.
So you have ATVs, snowmobiles, motorcycles.
Boat slash.
Trailer full of dirt bikes.
I don't know what all, would encompass a lot of things.
But I see that quite a bit here in town.
I can't imagine much of the stuff being left in the driveway.
Dude, buddy.
We added something about trailers to this section. Because you don't have that definition to recreational vehicles.
No, because it really isn't a recreational vehicle.
But a street legal trailer parked in somebody's driveway.
Yeah.
Is that.
And maybe that's your way around it. Vehicles on tires, motor vehicles on tires, or a street legal vehicle, or a street legal trailer, and whatever's in that street legal trailer.
Then you go back to the licensing.
Of what, the trailer?
Well, to be street legal, some trailers have to be, some don't have to.
See, smaller ones don't.
Smaller ones don't have to.
But are there some that are not, okay, so, okay, well, I hope we don't have to.
I think street legal trailers are covered under the definition of the recreational vehicles.
Yeah, it does say trailers.
Built on a single chassis, to be towed.
Yeah, but of course.
It doesn't include.
C and D, though.
Yeah, right.
But we could, you know, if you want, I could put a, another definition right at the bottom that says a recreational vehicle also includes, you know, for the purpose of this definition, a recreational vehicle also includes a boat on a trailer, and, uh, street legal trailers with other vehicle types, such as ATVs, snowmobiles, motorcycles.
I think you don't even have to specify boat when you say the street legal trailer, because the boat's going to be on that street legal trailer.
Sure.
Let's don't get any wordier than we have to.
Well, we're good at wordier. Would that be okay, to approach it that way?
Yeah, that's.
Can I read what I wrote? I'm just seeing if this gets what you want. So we add A, D, but it's not an E, it's a freestanding. It says, for the purpose of this definition, a recreational vehicle also includes a street legal trailer used for transporting motorized and non-motorized recreational vehicles, including boats, snowmobiles, ATVs, and motorcycles.
It sounds good to me. I think you've captured what we were hoping for.
Cool. All right then.
Unless we think of something else.
Yeah.
I was going to say.
Go back to fifth line.
You could throw UTV in there if you want.
How many bicycles did you have in the trailer?
Yeah. What's UTV?
It's a side-by-side. You know, big Polaris, side-by-side. Sure. How about including but not limited to boats? I said transporting motorized and non-motorized recreational vehicles, including but not limited to boats. So you can do your UTV, OTV, rocket.
Hovercraft.
How about my airplane?
Somebody's food cart.
We've got food carts. In fact, the food cart chapter is under construction. The food cart section.
Well, this is for just on the side of his house, the food cart is somewhere else.
Sure. But.
You want to eliminate.
This definition says design primarily as temporary living quarters to recreational camping, travel, or seasonal use, which would not include food, food trailer, would fit that.
Somebody's got a park on there.
Well, they might, but I think we'd have them on code enforcement without any problem with that. Okay. Anything else on access space? Cool. So I've got your notes, and we'll plug it in. Access spacing is in Article Three. So you'll see this language when it comes back. And now, let's take a look at accessory.
I have one more question on this. So F is driveway required. And I'm reading what it says here, and I'm like, okay. So groups of more than four parking spaces shall be so located and served by a driveway that their use will require no backing movements or maneuvering within a street right of way. So that is on Arturio and Collectors only? Or to me, that's the guy that has the three-car garage and the RV site, is four parking spaces?
And it has to have a driveway. You couldn't, you couldn't have it set up so that everybody could, I mean, all four of those spaces would access directly to back onto the street.
All four of them would. All four of them would.
Groups of more than four parking spaces.
I wasn't sure what that was meant for.
Must be for second.
Yeah.
I thought it was for the duplex. It doesn't say that, does it?
It doesn't say that.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure what that was intended for, but we have four spaces.
Well, that's under multifamily, commercial.
Parking spaces. Typically, we identify their minimum width requirements and length and all that. Designated parking areas. It's just, that's different than driveways. We're talking about parking in your residential driveway versus parking spaces that are constructed as a mini parking lot. John, is that accurate?
Yeah, it's saying if you have a parking lot, four or more spaces, you have to access it by a driveway, not by just backing onto the street.
So this isn't for residential? This is not pointing at residential?
It actually really points at multifamily and commercial and industrial.
I just want to make sure of that, because it doesn't say.
So it would be clear of that?
It doesn't say that. That's why I'm asking. No, it's, it's like...
Somehow already you've got the, this is stapled together. It's multifamily, it's industrial. This is what you have.
No. No, that's not.
All right.
You have different...
I have this clarifying language. See, this works for you. Driveway required, just the underlying part.
Yeah.
Say driveway required for multifamily, commercial, public, and industrial uses. So, it leaves out single-family and...
Okay.
...gludensis.
Thank you. Okay, perfect. That was all I had on that.
All right. Let's take a look at, um, accessory buildings.
So, you added a new little church.
Now, is the best way to capture it. I like using illustrations where possible, so that just text.
So, on your first chart up here, up to 11,000 square feet, it's a 1,200 square foot unit, and then over 11,000 feet, you have 1,200 square feet plus an additional. So, that first 1,200 feet corresponds to 11,000 feet of that 44. That would leave 33, so we could have another 3,300 feet for a total of 4,500 square feet of buildings. Does that sound like I'm capturing you?
Yeah. This is the formula we came up with last time.
No, no, it's fine if it's just...
Yeah, it just means that if you're over 11,000, you get that 1,200 square feet.
But you have to deduct the 11,000 from whatever you have. If you have 44,000, you deduct that 11,000 for the first 1,200-foot building, and then whatever's left, you get to...
Yes.
My, my example to myself was a 44,000-square-foot lot. You take 11,000 feet off of that, and you get a 1,200-foot building. That leaves you 33,000 square feet, so you have another 3,300 feet of building.
Let's clarify that.
That's pretty dense.
Because, uh, a big reason you folks review this is because you're the focus group that catches this kind of stuff, so I appreciate it, uh, in terms of readability and all. So, what if it said instead, 12,000 square feet plus an additional 100 square feet for each additional 1,000 square feet of lot size over 11,000 square feet?
But I, I think it says that. Now, I just wanted to make sure it did.
Yeah.
No, you...
I had to, I had to, I had to draw it out for myself to make sure, but...
No, it says that. I do.
You know, I would feel better just putting over 11,000 square feet, because then it's really clear of what, what it's talking about. I mean, Dennis, if that's you had to ask the question, to say, "Is that what it means?" It means we gotta clarify that.
We got a handout in our box, 3.207.01. The old one says 1,000 square feet. That says 1,200 square feet, and the new one, the handout, says 800 square feet.
This is a dwelling, though, in the handout.
This is accessory dwelling.
That's not dwellings. This is...
The other one's barns.
Barns?
This is garages, barns, or whatever. It's not, it's not houses.
It's your, it's your outbuildings.
Right. It's not accessories.
So, they're not accessible?
Well, no, these are your outbuildings. Exactly. So, yeah, if you have an acre of barn, that's gonna give you a pretty substantial barn.
And, and you could use it.
Yeah, 3,000 plus.
Yeah, yeah.
Or several, right? It can be split in between different buildings.
Sure.
Our current code only allows for one accessory structure, so this gives the option of splitting that up into different buildings.
Yeah.
Okay, so that first chart, uh, reflected what you came up with last time and clarified that point. The second one is, again, reflecting the, uh, language that you came up with. Just wanted to make it work well. I have a couple of notes there I wanted to ask you about. One, well, one, illustrations. When we, even maybe by the time we go to hearing, we're gonna have illustrations that will fit into this to give, you know, that kind of example of these things. So, you expect that. We may not do it until after the hearing. We'll see. We'll see. We'll see when, if we can get it done, I'd like to do that. The second one, uh, change definition of coverage to refer to impermeable surfaces. That was a note I wrote for myself to go back and, uh, note that for coverage, but that concurs with what you're thinking, right? What, the, the coverage that, uh, that we have, the maximal coverage on a lot, refers purely to impermeable surfaces and all impermeable surfaces. So, therefore, the building and the driveway all add up to impermeable surface.
Gravel, all of it.
No, gravel's not.
Yes, gravel.
It is.
Unfortunately.
Water goes down too. Is this all about water drainage?
About water.
In the, in the definitions of impermeable surface, most engineering manuals will sit, well, are all, will say gravel is, the gravel surface being constructed for driving on is going to be almost as impermeable as the asphalt, because you've compacted the ground so much underneath it that if it may go down through that hubble or a rock, you're gonna go stand right off and get some...
Uh-huh.
Unless it's constructed as a permeable pavement system, which is one way people can still have a driveway area or patio or something and meet their lock requirement as a design.
So, we don't have a definition for impermeable surface?
We don't have a definition that was clear on the point. That's why I just made a note for myself, because I think that was your attempt. Just wanted to check with you, you know, I just want to make sure.
Oh, here it is. Impermeable area. There is impermeable area. It's under the definitions.
This thing we got?
On page 16.
16.
On, uh, one.
It's mid-page on 16. Okay, it includes gravel there. Wonder how that happened.
Yeah, why is that in there? Mine reads really nice. Can I say it?
Okay. Good. All right, that was just a...
What figure did we use on that? What percentage?
It's varied by zone. Um, so we'd have to go back to the individual zones.
I can't, I can't recall.
It's like 50% of the single-family, but it's up to 80% or some for industrial. Okay, going through, um, accessory structures. I think really the important thing to see was what was in that table under A, because those are the items that we discussed at length of the last meeting. Let's see if I've met your...
Do you have something else?
No, I think the number...
Yeah, we took out two, so it goes one, three now.
They're, they're all for one, many different things.
Yeah. Okay.
Got it. Very clear. If any one, you have other options, and that's a lot, right? H should be it.
Okay.
Then, on the second page, you have A for setbacks, and then C for multi, multiple accessory, and then A again.
On that A, again, prohibited structures, metal shipping containers. Are those prohibited even on the two-and-a-half and five-acre hobby farms, or whatever else we might want to call those?
Trying to remember what we came up with.
Metal shipping containers are, are just prohibited, period? I don't know if any of our farmers are using those or not. You're closer to the area.
Out of a storage facility.
Down the lake usually, and well off the road where it's not visible.
Lots of businesses bring them in for storage.
Absolutely. Great storage facility. Secure too.
Do you, do you have them out on your place?
Not on my property. We have one at work, and we painted it to make it look like it's part of a building. So, I think, I think if we, if you have them, you want to make them aesthetically pleasing.
What you're talking about here also applies to single-family, so if you want to allow not in a residential...
Oh, okay.
No, but on...
I mean, they're, they're allowable in your...
No, no, but I, I was thinking specifically of the two-and-a-half and five-acre farms that we have.
Well, this deals with single-family, right?
Yeah, there's single families on those.
Well...
Okay, I was just curious how that was. It's fine.
What do you want to do with it?
I don't have a hard feeling one way or another.
I say leave it on there.
You'd allow a farmer to have them. You'd allow a farmer to have them. People might have children at their sitting out there and use some storage facility. Back in the trees. You just do it.
I guess if nobody saw it, nobody could complain, could they? Then we don't have to send Jake out there.
There you go.
Okay. So, accessory structures. I cover it? Cool. Let's turn to Article One. Anything jump out at you?
My first ones are into the definitions.
Yeah, mine too.
Mine too.
We don't have a definition for an accessory dwelling unit that seems kind of important these days.
I'll find the language others use for definitions.
Are they Syrian definitions or gruul definitions?
They are, uh, probably we'll get the Oregon building code definition.
There you go. There you go.
I also have written down accessory structure flood. I don't know if that was in a previous one that...
Dwelling units.
Do we take that out, or...
Well, we're...
Yeah.
We did have a discussion.
Okay, yeah.
I wrote it down, and I put a question mark, so...
What this code does, which is, you can decide whether you like it or not. There are certain definitions required by federal law for floods, uh, wetlands, that aren't necessarily the same definitions that we use for vast majority of the city, even though they're called the same thing. So, rather than just being in those chapters, they're lifted and put up front here, but it has the, uh, it, it shows that it's different. Like, well, like, for instance, if you go to page seven, you can see alteration historic. See, that's the same language that's in your historic structure, I mean, your historic chapter. Alteration or altered sign, that's the same definition that's in there. Now, we can do this two ways. We can leave it like this, virtually all the definitions in the code are in one place, as well as being redundant because they're in the individual chapters, or we can yank those out of here and just leave them in the individual chapters.
I don't care, really, as long as we have it.
This is a quick reference this way.
That's kind of the point. If it all is in one place, it'd be easier to find.
Because I've got to try and find things, and Citron might try and find them.
Hey, John.
Sir.
Just have a quick question on the definition of accessory structure, accessory building structure. It says a detached. So, right now, we use the setback requirements for, like, a patio. We use for the accessory structure, so if you go up to five feet, I think that's changing to 10 feet, or five feet to the side. Same thing with, like, an RV cover that's either attached or detached from the house. So, this is, this definition only says detached. So, what about attached, like, a patio or RV structure cover that's attached to the home? What kind of setbacks are we gonna put on those?
Those generally are considered part of the home and subject to the same setbacks.
Okay.
Which is why you find, some folks figure that out and say, "Boy, if we're gonna add this big patio cover on the back of the house, and it's gonna meet that setback requirement, if we detach it, we can have a lesser setback in the backyard." It's a bit of a game, but th- this is kind of standard language, only referring to detached structures as accessory structures. Brady Hartford.
I was wondering if you guys were gonna comment on that?
This is a way to manipulate around and attach something that we thought of as unsightly, um, if it's not, doesn't match the structure, right? If you attach it to the house and it doesn't match the structure, that could be somewhat unsightly.
If they're accessories...
I mean, I'm not opposed to, you know, RV covers at all, but, um, it could be unsightly if it wasn't done properly, right? I mean, I don't have a problem with RV storage and covers, but it shouldn't matter.
Metal, metal car phones.
Those are accessory structures.
And currently, we...
They're comparable.
Currently, we have a setback from the main dwelling of accessory structures that are detached of six feet, and we don't have anything in the new code on, on, uh, setback from the main structure.
Yeah, we were kind of leaving that just to whatever fire code requirements go on.
Okay.
Knowing that the fire code is, is the word of God.
Yeah.
And I...
We better attach it, that way you can use that six feet.
I have had several, like, patio cover permits come in that are, that are fall within that 20-foot setback of the rear property line. They're like two or three feet over. So, they're, you know, 18 feet from the, to the back property line, but I've been using the accessory structure when I do those reviews, so...
Which allows the lesser setback.
Yep. It allows up to five feet, so...
Why don't we just take the word detached out? I don't think it hurt anything, and it might just make it easier to administer or design around.
I've talked to the building officials on the, like, a patio cover. They'd rather have it be attached to the home, because it's structurally more sound than it is detached and can follow the streets here.
So, just...
Yeah, this, this really creates more flexibility, which is that word detached out. Okay, cool. We're on a roll. And I do want to remind all of you, um, Matt Forrest and I mentioned this to each other earlier this week, that, uh, when this whole thing gets done, it is our best shot at that moment in time, and you're gonna get it back in a year with the tweaks that we discover administering it or bringing matters to you. And we'll come up with a laundry list. Think of it as the warranty repair list, and, uh, come back and tweak this. So, it doesn't have to be absolutely perfect right now. It won't be. We'll come back with that.
So, you say I've seen it all? You've never seen it all. There's always more to come.
Really? So, uh, we'll, we'll be keeping a list as the year goes on. I'll think, "Yeah, I better go fix that." Okay. Anything else in definitions that's spoken to anyone?
I have one. On page 23, parking area public. There is not a definition of a truck in, or in, maybe we need to define what truck means.
Uh-huh.
Page 23, under, says parking... Page 23 under says parking area public.
But not to include trucks.
That's interesting. Automobiles and other motor vehicles, but not trucks. There's where we park our boats.
There you go. What if it said, but not trucks in excess of 15,000 pounds gross vehicle weight or something? I mean, the intent is a larger truck. Well, probably a big box truck and certainly a semi. I don't know, you know trucks. What would you do for a weight if you wanted to?
And, and it'd be, this, this is a good example. There's parking lot right out here over the park. You know, there's public parking lot. What do we want to do to keep them out of here?
So you're talking semis, is that?
Well, I don't know.
The intent really is trucks as in the context of semis and large box trucks.
Yeah, could be a 20 foot box truck, right?
Yeah. So a 20 foot box truck is what your staple stuff is delivered in. Is that?
12,000 pounds or less or?
So what is the public parking area of our, our parking lot here?
Our parking lot out here.
Over at the park.
Park.
Most everything else around here is private property or public road.
So 12,000 pounds or less? 12,000 pounds or less?
That'll get you a small, like a delivery truck.
I was thinking 16, but.
Where does the licensing break?
I think it, um, T plate, well, I mean, to have a PUC, you have to be at 26,000 pounds or above.
So we're sectioning the code, is this in your code?
I'm not sure how much you need.
Oregon doesn't have a grocery like Washington State sometimes used to have.
Yeah.
Remember we used to have on the site as a truck? Even for pickups?
You don't have to do that anymore. You can't, you can't base it on T plates because people have a pickup that has a T plate carrying 16,000 or 20,000 pounds.
It's a T plate.
A T plate is a, it's just right under the PUC.
Well, what about this? I just said, but not to include trucks in excess of 12,000 pounds gross vehicle weight.
Yeah.
Sounds fine to me. I mean, that could be one of the things that we look at in the year. I don't think it's been an issue here recently, has it?
Or what if you said?
I don't think this hay hauler's parking.
Moves to the park of automobiles and other motor vehicles and trucks less than 16,000 GBW. But not to include trucks less than. That's kind of difficult to understand.
Not to include trucks greater than.
Yeah, maybe trucks, yeah.
Including trucks less than?
Less than 16,000 GBW.
Is that the new number?
I have 12.
Oh, or 12, whatever. I, you know, 12 or whatever.
I'm fucking whatever. I think.
Let's go 12.
Much as a street sweeping away.
But that's, that's not part.
Anywhere for parties.
Not for parties.
You better not be, huh?
Yeah.
All right.
I've got one back on. We forgot that. Lot coverage made out of the impermeable area, which is great. Can we try that with the lot coverage definition here? If that's what we mean.
Yeah, where's that definition?
Um, so impermeable area on page 16.
Can those be combined?
They could just say that portion of total lot area covered by impermeable
Yeah.
surfaces, sorry, including structures.
John, when you bring this back to us, could you make each one of these changes? Could you put an asterisk alongside of it so when we go through this, we can highlight or recognize changes we've made?
Referencing back how far? Because this is at least the fourth iteration.
This, this session.
From this session?
Yeah.
Well, what I would probably do is bring it, well, okay, now this is what? The intent here is going to hearing. I mean, hopefully if we get done with this, it means you're ready to go to hearing.
That means.
Which means we'd have a final at that point without all of those notations.
That means he'd have to go do another edit and that would be a lot of work for him.
Well, what I would, yeah, I mean, it just, it's our sequence.
I think we've basically captured Article One at the end of the day, haven't we?
Mm-hmm. If you want yourselves to have one that shows the edits, yeah, I could provide that to you. But it shouldn't be the one that we put out to the public. Or the hearing.
No, I was, that was for our use only.
Yeah, I can do that. But it will, you know, have, it'll have the crossouts and underline in red.
Yeah, that's it. Does that look good?
Sure, it's good.
So when you're ready for the next one, I have one more. Or two or three. I'm not sure yet.
How are you as the proofreader?
No, just I sometimes read it and it doesn't make sense to me.
Go ahead.
But that doesn't mean it doesn't make sense.
Okay.
So page 16, home occupation. I'm reading that.
What was it you were looking at?
Home occupation on page 16. I'm reading that and I'm like, is that? Is that really what we're trying to say of home occupation is, I guess?
That's my son.
I mean, it's just, it's really weird and I'm not saying it's not good. I'm just saying.
He still has all his chemo and radiation. He still got his stomach too good. And when he gets eaten up solid food and all that stuff, okay.
That's pretty low ease.
Okay.
Yeah, I get it, but I understand your concern, but this pretty much kind of covers that so a person couldn't split hairs with the definition.
Okay.
If we got into an argument with them.
There is one typo there.
It says us instead of you.
You got that, okay.
It is hard to read. I have no idea how to make it better, it's just hard to read.
Yeah, I just read it and I'm like, does that really?
I have a question on page 28 on the sign. You're describing a flag as a sign. So as an example, Fitzpatrick across the highway has a massive American flag up there. Thing is absolutely spectacular. But if that's considered a sign, he couldn't even put his name on the building because he's more than covered the square footage of a allowable sign. So is that the intent to include state and national flags as a sign?
Gets into the interesting question of content and the regulating content. Because if we excluded jurisdictional flags, including the official flag of the building from this, one could argue that's.
Okay, I, I see where you're going with it.
Yeah. You probably want to allow that.
Well, somebody's going to have to complain about it and then it'll be a, it'll be a complaint driven issue, so I just.
How about this?
Does the sign have to say something? Doesn't the sign have to say something?
No, he's, he's describing here that a flag is a sign.
Yeah, that's, what, what the Supreme Court said essentially is if you have to go outside and look at a sign to see what it says, then that violates the sign, I mean, the First Amendment. So we don't regulate content, which I think could be interpreted to say you can't regulate what kind of flag. However, the, one way is to let it go and say if there's complaints. The other would be to, perhaps say where it says flag, uh, blah, 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 flag, comma. Oh, it says including banner or pennant, but excluding, we can add, but excluding jurisdictional flags such as the local, state and federal flags and risk someone challenging it. So it kind of comes down to you're going to bluff one way or you're going to bluff the other.
I think it's fine like it is. I just wanted clarification of this. What I was reading was what I really thought I would.
What you've done by doing this is you're making that flag not conforming. Because it doesn't comply with this new code if you adopt it this way.
And I do like it.
What's Forrest?
No, I agree with this analysis on the, it, it has to be content neutral. You cannot look and see what's in the sign. The only thing we can stop on content is if it is, if it gets to be pornographic, something like that, then we can. And the Supreme Court is fine.
No, I think where I was going was do we want to call a flag a sign? If a flag is not a sign and that doesn't, it's not included in this at all, now that we could still have the argument for the banners and feathers.
So what's the definition of a flag? Is it a sign?
Well, but it is in this definition. In this definition, a flag is a sign.
We, we could come up with a definition of a flag. It says, you know, it's a rectangular banner that reflects, a rectangular banner, it's unflappable. But sometimes you hang it on the side of the building or something, so it's hard. Hard to figure that out. What do you think, boss?
I agree, it's hard to figure out.
Yeah. We could just take flag out of this definition and just have it say.
Where do we get our toes stepped on if we do that?
Banners or pennants. And just take flag out of the definition of a sign.
There you go.
Yeah, because you're not going to get, as you say, your toes stepped on if you eliminate that. And if that does become a problem down the road, as it says on our review, we can always come back and change that. So if we don't want to regulate something like that, we probably want to take flag out.
That would be my, my choice at this point and I, I just don't want to open this up to having Holy Cal.
Exactly, right, right.
So let's take out the words flag, comma, including. And leave banner or pennant in.
Thank you.
Good call, Tess.
Yeah, that was good.
So remember the 10 signs that we approved? Okay. What, what are those? I thought those were called flag signs.
Those are banners or pennants.
They were called feather, that was.
Feather.
They were feathers.
Feathers.
The 14 feathers that were between the property lines.
So, so it's not a flag? There's not the word flag on those, okay.
This is one of those places where you will probably see an illustration. It will show a pennant and will include a flag as part of the illustration.
And I really don't want to dominate this, we have one more on page 29. Does anybody else have anything to say? I'll shut up.
No, I'm fine.
Keepers of the integrity here.
For mobile and manufactured homes, not within mobile manufactured home park, blah, 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 start of construction means a fixing the home to the permanent site. So the foundation doesn't count as start of construction? How can that be?
This is on 29.
It's on page 29 down at the very bottom, the very last.
Oh, start of construction. This language comes straight out of federal requirements.
For flood.
For flooding. Yeah, and we really can modify the language. I hear you. I know what you're saying.
That's fine, I just.
See, the problem is if you have common sense and this is federal language and those aren't necessarily the same thing.
So that's it, I'm done. I can go home. My paper's.
No, I'm not done yet.
No, I am.
The only time that applies is if we're dealing with a flood issue. Otherwise, art, the previous article, art of definition applies.
Hi. Anybody have anything else?
I'm trying to read my notes. On page 20, manufactured home or mobile home park and manufactured home park or subdivision flood. I wrote on here something about we were going to combine them. And I said existing mobile home park combined for two or more species. I don't remember.
Well, yeah, that's interesting. Because of course, the second one is the one that comes out of federal language in the flood plan ordinance.
Oh, because that one says two or more and the one above it says four or more. That was the problem.
We'd only deal with that second one in a flood plan. Where it says two or more.
That was the issue. It was, it was two different.
Well, we could do the first one and just change it where two or more manufactured dwellings instead of four. So that, so the standard is exactly the same.
I don't know, I just had it written down that we were going to combine them.
It makes more sense to combine them.
Well, not so much combine them, maybe it's just make it so they're the same number of lots. Where one says two or more, one says four or more, right?
I don't think you'd bother to see, kind of the way in flood areas, you see manufactured home parks. Is this just where you have something or not?
Do we not?
I'm sorry. Okay.
Well, there may be a park in an area that could have been a flood.
Yes.
If you elevate it out of the flood zone, it's not a flood zone.
True.
Right.
True, okay.
I don't need you to change the definition for your other. Because two separate sentences apply in different areas.
Do we keep it at four?
For both, is that what you're saying?
No, it's got to be two of the second one.
Oh, I just had it written down that we were going to combine it, but I don't really care. I just.
Anyone want to change the first one to read two or more? Yeah, I think it's.
Does chapter 10 of state law overrule us no matter what we do with that?
Yeah, but we want to be consistent. Yeah.
But so the one of the, any place where four or more manufactured dwellings are located with a 10 feet of one another on a lot tract, a personal land under state ownership. So we had a large piece of land, we had two manufactured homes upon it. I don't know if we had the situation, you know. In different places, it'd be public park and park standards.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if that makes sense. I don't know if we had it, but.
So the way this is written, if you could plot three manufactured homes on a lot and not a park. But we wouldn't allow that to happen.
Other parts were open.
That's right. So if I was to say two of them, it's I think it'd make it easier.
But then though, chapter 10 is going to kick in. But then, though, chapter 10's gonna kick in if we're going to define what a manufactured home park is. And that could change some things.
Please don't let's break chapter 10 here.
Yeah. You know, I'd probably keep it at four just because there's less chance, less likelihood of chapter 10 kicking in. And they're still gonna have to deal with other criteria within the code if they want to put three on there.
True.
The other reason to put two is if our district holding unit allows a second, now we don't want to put that in any private home park.
Yeah.
Let's leave it at four.
Let's leave it at four.
One advice for the city attorney and city engineer.
Let's leave it at four. Yeah.
So chapter 23, here goes the can of worms, right? Partition. To divide it within a calendar year, meaning we could, somebody could have divided it in November and in January could divide it again.
Yep, that's state law. Which is why we included provisions regulating what we call serial partitions. Because in theory, a person could have one piece of land in November, platted it into three pieces, and then come back and plaid each of those into three more in January. So you have a nine-lot subdivision without all the improvements or consideration. So what we did is we put language in.
Where is that at? I forgot.
It's in chapter four. I have an article four. And you'll see that. It's coming back. Where we, there is this mayor guy that you know who was adamant that we include language to prevent what we call serial partitions like that. And basically, what the language says is if it can be re-divided, you have to treat it as a subdivision.
I just don't remember seeing where that got plopped in. So that's the reason I brought it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, Matt was talking about it. Looks like they're dealt with. I do remember that.
It's under oral and verbal.
Oh, okay. So on page 25, plan unit development. That's probably directly out of your, out of your state code two. Because when I read that, I'm like, that's really gushy.
Well...
It's warm and fuzzy.
Plan unit developments are squishy and warm and fuzzy. Because essentially, what a plan unit development is, is when you allow a developer to design a project and not take into account all the setback standards and lot standards and all-in-design kind of a homogenous project that you get to review and approve based on the criteria for plan development, which basically is, does it still meet the density? Does it still protect surrounding property? And does it create a public benefit in the context of providing permanent open space or protecting sensitive lands or something like that?
Okay.
So, yeah, it is squishy. If you don't want squishy, you do a subdivision. If you want squishy, you do plan development. And remember, we're only allowing plan development in the mixed-use zone. It's looking at, you know, kind of mixed-use complexes that would have a variety of buildings on one lot.
We had talked at one point about coming up with some very specific standards for apartment buildings, condominiums. We don't want the Marine Corps quantum bearings out here. I haven't seen that anywhere. I haven't heard it discussed anywhere. And if we're back to re-reviewing one, has that slipped by the wayside?
No, it's not in one. Because we don't do it in definitions.
Well, I know it's not in one, but I haven't read it in two or three.
It will be in...
Okay, so it hasn't been, it hasn't happened yet?
Yeah, it's in article two. It hasn't come back to you yet. In fact, Walt, my partner and I were working on that language today.
Thank you.
So you're gonna see it at article two.
We have that and discussed it.
No, I'm sure things have happened that we're not aware of. It just, it seems like if we're coming back and re-reviewing one for the 14th time and I haven't heard anything about that, where is it at? But that's fine.
Our next meeting.
That's fine. That's fine.
Keep in mind the definitions don't spell how things are done.
Right. I understand that. We've been through three and four, two, three, and four also once, and we haven't touched on it yet. I just want to make sure it doesn't get left by the wayside.
On the way. I wrote language today on offsets and jogs.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. Thank you so much.
Offsets and who?
Jogs. Yeah, it's a bluegrass band out of shit.
I heard it pretty good.
Yeah. The offsets and jogs.
So on page 28, senior housing. I wrote down that we were gonna add assisted living to that or not?
Assisted living falls kind of under the context of nursing rehabilitation and continuing care, but we can't put assisted living, including nursing rehabilitation care and continuing care communities.
I don't know. What does anybody else care? I mean, does anybody else care?
In fact, the term nursing's ruined.
Where does the term nursing and rehabilitation, what's different from that and assisted? This is more emergent?
I guess it was just more wording that's used nowadays. That's more current wording.
Making it specific too, right?
That's, that was all.
It's in chapter two now. We talked about permitted use of nursing home assisted living instead of combos and so on.
No, but we, I guess we're looking for a definition.
Yeah. So what I just changed it to say assisted living, including nursing rehabilitation care and continuing care communities.
Okay, thank you.
I really, really, really like this idea of all of the definitions in one location, even though they're duplicated throughout. I like the idea that we can go to one spot and get an answer.
And also whether when we get this done, we'll create a index that will be searchable. So, yes, senior living here is gonna be able to go to the index and see everywhere you can find the word senior.
What we will probably do, John, is we have our new municipal code online.
Yep.
It's searchable. So we're going to, we talked with the company. So because in the past, this has been adopted as ordinance. So we have one or two ways to do it. Either make it part of our municipal code, but they also have the ability for us to make this a separate document. So we'll probably do that. So we will need to have it, so they will have that tool, stuff for a similar book.
Cool.
We will have. So that's most likely.
That was all I had. You're not gonna believe. It's not midnight yet.
We got out of here by eight. Out of here, work.
Who wrote this accessory dwelling units? Did you guys do this or did staff do it?
I did.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Well, for my two cents, for the exception of the, I wanted a smaller size. I wanted 650 feet, but I'll cave on that. I'll give you 800 for the rest of it. Thank you.
To them.
Where did that come from?
For accessory dwellings.
This was their handout? This was, this was in our...
Maximum size.
It was in my handout. I don't like you.
If you're comfortable with the driveway standards as they are written now, if you would be willing to entertain a motion to recommend approval of that to council. So because we have a number of people that have been holding waiting to do some driveway work, and we've had some that have done some things that are currently outside the coast that we'd like to be able to address, let them know whether they have to tear it back out or not. Can you do it?
Well, I would move to so adopt.
Oh, we do that?
The driveway.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
So are you talking 3.102.04 and 08 only, right? But not 05, 06, 07, which you're assuming that is that.
With the changes Johnson, you're gonna make it, you're comfortable recommending that adoption forward, we can take that to council next month. And take that answer with your allow, those that we, that will be adopted ahead of time.
So what about 05, 06, and 07? Are we leaving that out? The right-of-way and construction specs and the sidewalks? We're not doing that?
So right now, we don't, we don't feel like we need more than...
Just these two.
These two right now to be able to have the information we need to let people with the road progress. We still want the others up in, but they can wait for the rest.
Okay.
I think those are the two.
Under here.
Yeah, so that'd be, so I think he's got it figured out. 102.04 and 3.103.08. Those are the two, correct? Okay. So just be moving adoption of 3.102.04 and 3.103.08.
With the changes. I make a motion that we adopt 3.102.04 through 3.103.08 with the changes that John has made in his notes for driveways and access.
I have a second to...
We don't need through this.
That's just what I was gonna say. Is there, so let's amend it and take out the through. So you just want 2.102.04 and 3.103.08.
Take the motion, 3.102.04, 3.103.08 with Johnson's corrections.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I have a second there.
We got a second, yeah. Now, is that just to adopt the motion?
Yes.
Or approve it, I mean.
Yes, to approve the motion. So now you want to just take the vote?
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to adopt 3.102.04 through to...
No, not through, and.
Oh, and, 3.103.08. And we have a motion and a second. Any more conversations?
And, I'm sorry, just to clarify, and with the changes that have been made this evening.
And with the changes that have been made this evening.
Oh, very good. Yes.
So, any more comments before we take a vote? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
We will do a, so the year later, we will do a staff report. And the council has to adopt that portion.
So that'll come before council on March, September 11th, I think it is, 10th, 11th?
Well, the next meeting.
And then 10th, I think, yeah. And then it will be approved then.
Okay, great.
And then that will help staff deal with a lot of the questions that people are waiting on. They're waiting kind of for this.
Okay. You think we've covered everything?
So far. I think you're gonna have a minimal article two available very soon and probably articles three and four within a couple of weeks. The question is when you want to get back together again, or you can have Jake poll everybody, or whatever works for you. I will email you through Jake, Article Two, as soon as it's off the presses in a few days.
Why don't we, let me make a suggestion. Let's have Jake poll because we're short three members tonight.
Yeah.
And find a date we can get back to.
So how soon would you be able to be ready to do that?
Well, I could do Article Two yet this month if people wanted to. I am gonna be gone the first week plus a little of September, but we can pull one off before that if you want to.
Can we shoot for next week? Is that, should we be gone?
Should we leave it in Jake's? Ever some capable hands?
Yeah, I guess we'll have to.
I'll chat with John to figure out a date that works for him and then I'll poll you guys.
And we gotta, we'll see if we can get two meetings set, make sure we get through all three articles.
In September.
I'm okay until the 15th of next month. If anything...
We currently don't have any applications for a hearing for next month. We still are within our 20-day, so we still could get something processed, get the notices out and have a hearing for that. There's been talks of a subdivision, but we haven't gotten anything yet from them. So we can kind of wait and see until we get closer to the beginning of next month, if you like, to set, to see if our, our normal scheduled meeting would work.
Well, you're gonna poll for two meetings then.
Yeah, I'll poll for two meetings, yeah.
When is the normal scheduled meeting?
Seventeen.
Third Tuesday?
Seventeen.
Oh.
Seventeenth?
Yeah.
I won't be here for that.
You'll be here for that?
Oh, I should be here for that.
Okay, you had a call.
It's you to bring up, so wouldn't you wait?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I don't normally go down there, but I drove down Millerburg Drive. The people that patched that street is totally unacceptable. Now they got it all torn up. So virtually that whole length is, I don't know if they're gonna redo that whole street? The whole street's gonna be repaved?
Yes.
Never mind.
I thought we agreed that the fellow that redid Alexander, put those speed bumps in there.
Oh, yeah, and he never did anything about it. This was a year ago.
Yeah.
Right at the end of Teddy and Alexander, the guy that built those three houses back in there.
And is building the other three with the barn.
Yeah, you drive down there, thump, thump, every time. We brought that up to him a year ago. He said, oh, yeah, I'll get a look about it. He never did.
He was gonna get his contractor back out to fix it.
Are you talking Steve Smith?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
We shouldn't drive down our nice streets and go thump, thump with our cars.
We decided to go with the...
Oh, that one that goes like this?
Yeah.
Oh, I've hit that too, yeah.
Chanel, isn't the new code that they have to repay?
That's not acceptable. They can't do it right. It's somebody else.
That one was done before the new code.
There are new standards now.
We have new standards on that now?
We, we have some different standards on how wide they have to go and how to patch when they have to cut certain ages streets and certain types of streets. So, but those weren't replaced when, when originally. Millerburg Drive is getting, we'll all get priority in late, brand-new street basically at the end of this, which will be before the rains this year. We're also talking with them about sending that all the way past the three homes that have trenches to the east of the subdivisions going in.
Well...
If the city prefers basing that on that.
Yeah, that one's trash. Does the city get a pay for the new street or is the developer paying for the new street?
Developers paying for the new street is part of the work they're doing there. They were required to drive in the lane between bike lanes. But there's additional, it's not part of their project, but if we can pick that up at the same time and get rid of those other trench patches from a couple of years ago, that'll be nice.
Are we going to have another open house for the zoning changes? Is that, or is that...
I think it's not. Unless you feel compelled, you need a new one.
I thought I read somewhere that I have two.
That's what I thought.
We had initially talked about having two, but instead of having two, we, just due to scheduling, we decided to have one long, longer meeting. That's why it went from four to seven PM, so.
So what came of that?
That's a good question for Matt.
I have a concern about how people are notified about that.
Okay.
People that are directly affected by zone changes.
We, we sent a notice to everyone in the city on that.
I understand, I understand. But I think there could be something a little more specific sent to somebody that's, their property is directly being changed rather than the general notice that was sent out to everybody in the city. I noticed there was one person in particular out here on Old Salem, their property was going to be impacted possibly. Margaret called and told her she wasn't aware of it. Now, I understand that we sent stuff out to everybody, but kind of a generic mailer and maybe something a little more personal to somebody that's being affected personally.
We have to send out a notice before the hearing, ballotment or 56 notice, which everyone in town will get. For those of you that voted for it, among you, but anyway, it is the law of the land in Oregon, if it's in the zone. I am not aware that we have a whole lot of instances where a person's property is being effectively changed.
Okay.
And if you have any that are effectively changed...
I could be mistaken. I spoke as a lady's voice.
Yeah, we can identify if anybody is truly changed. There are some. Like if we go with the... the housing across the street, obviously that's different, we can let that property overcome.
What housing across the street?
You're aware zoning map has, we actually have a property owner here tonight, who is just north of us, and it's about a question on how to work with your property, your draft.
So, can you explain what, what zoning that you're talking about? Because we did not approve that.
You haven't approved anything, other than...
I know.
Walked through the draft.
Right.
But it shows...
I have the map right here.
Yeah, it shows...
Not in the housing across the street, are you talking about?
No, not this way, the other one. The tank farm. Which is industrial, and the proposal, if you look at it, it's blue on the map, which is office, that side of it.
It's office.
It proposed to be changed to office, as we should have it.
I agree.
Instead of the tank farm.
I think the one that surprised us at the meeting was multifamily over on Palm Harbor's property, running up against Palm Harbor.
I was really taken aback by the fact that that was changed prior to us, because for me, that open house was supposed to be presenting what we had agreed to as a planning commission, and when we walked in and saw that the map had been changed...
So that was discussed?
It was discussed, but we did not agree to it.
You told me specifically Palm Harbor would never agree to that, because it would devalue their property too much.
I believe that was even voted on.
Yeah, that was voted on. The map was created, Matt took it straight off the air.
What we voted on was changing Bane and Amanda away from that and making it medium, but we did not vote on that.
Pretty sure that...
Pretty sure you did.
No, we didn't. What did you guys vote on? You weren't here.
I don't think that was here.
What did we vote on, guys?
Probably the minutes, right?
It's not in the minutes, I looked it up. You weren't here either?
It's the 28th.
Yeah, we did not vote on that, and, so I know that Ann also wasn't, was here and said that wasn't what we voted on, so, I'm just saying.
None of those things are carved in stone yet.
No. But, but I was the one that suggested it, because we were trying to find another spot to put it, but I got all kinds of no's, and we did not vote.
So the minutes read, it was decided to remove the residential medium zone to that, that was drafted and on the Bane Street and Amanda, so that area?
Right.
This area will be changed back to residential low-density zone. I can listen back to the recording.
That's all we voted on.
But I'm pretty sure, because Matt said we had to put it somewhere, where would you guys want to put it? And he said, well, how about we put it over here, because it met all the same criteria.
But all the people said no.
Okay.
So...
We were under the impression that Matt was with John, going to meet with somebody with the state to see if we were even going to be required to have multifamily, because we're...
We have basic concurrence.
That we're close enough to consider Albany's multifamily hours.
We've, we've had discussions with staff about moving that back, but I, I would want to take that off, but I'm pretty sure that, Jake can listen to it, I'm pretty sure the council, the planning commission voted to...
That isn't what we voted on.
Put it there, and it was going to be needed, if it was required to be there, that's what you wanted.
We didn't vote a second time, and we, that was not what we voted on.
We can listen to the tape.
Okay.
I mean, listen to the tape, let's hear what Matt has to say when he gets back to the communication.
I talked to Matt, and he says that we voted on that, and I, and I said no. So, the one thing, though, okay, so, I'm going to just preface this, I was the one that suggested it, only because we were looking for another place to put it, but I probably wouldn't want that to be multi-zone all the way to Salem, Old Salem, because I'm concerned with how that's going to look when people drive down the road. And so I would want something different to be in the front, maybe some industrial or something, strip mall or something, and put those behind. I don't know, so that was just a thought. Did that make sense, what I said? No? Okay.
Our preferences do not have it.
I agree.
If we're required to have something, then we're going to have a spot to do it. At our next meeting, let's just bring back this back, and tell you what we figured out.
Okay. That sounds great.
And Matt can probably bring up some of the other, if he had any other concerns from citizens during the open house, and maybe do some update to the map from feedback he got from them. So, like I said, I didn't do any review of the feedback, now Matt has all of that, he'd have to present it to you.
So I was really confused by the, by the open house, because for me, the open house was just supposed to be us presenting what we had come up with, and it seems like the open house was more, well, what do you guys all think, after we had gone through all this work of getting this far? And I kind of went, well, shouldn't we have been asking those questions before we spent the dozens of hours?
They're trying to get, they're trying to get the customers' input.
But we should have got the customers' input before we spent the dozens of hours to know what we needed to go work on, I guess that's what I'm saying. Because we've already spent the dozens of hours, and now we're going to ask the, ask the customer what they want, and, and do you, do you hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, but we already did the labor, now it would just be refining.
Well, and I'm okay with refining, I'm okay with that, it just seems like it was, that would have been nice to do that first, so that we kind of know what we needed to work on. Does that make sense?
For both the code text and the map?
Yeah.
Generally, and I'll just throw this out, philosophically, they disagree with it, generally, it's found that the planning commission with its wise expertise is good at drafting things, because the public responds best if you give them something to respond to, not just a, hey, what do you want to do, kind of discussion, because they don't have any context, they're thinking about it or looking at it.
I agree, but that's, we did that, but then over here, we, we were saying, well, what do you want?
Well, basically, I think we just, I think we showed them the options that we came up with.
That's not what I saw.
Well, that's, that was what I took away from it.
And our general responses, that we heard is it was very positive.
Well, and I agree with that. It was very well received. I was just worried that we had gone out and said, okay, we've done all this work, and so now what do you think we should go to? And I'm like, what did we just spend time doing? That was my, that was where I was going with that. What did we just spend all this time doing? And yes, we want your input, but here's our product that we've given you. That was the other thing, too, did we have a copy of it sitting there? We said we were going to, I didn't see it.
We did, in fact, I actually had it on a computer right back there, so if a person had a specific question, we just pop right over there, pull up the section, expand it to...
And I didn't see that, and I was here two hours.
Probably did that, easily a dozen times.
Okay.
I do know that I had, if you remember, expressed that John had showed him what we're looking at, what we're discussing for accessory dwellings, because he's looking at Village Park here, and since John has showed him what the draft language is now, at the hearing, at that meeting, and he said he decided to do it.
I think that's going to be a really big positive.
Oh, good. Yeah, I was surprised.
See the little house on Melrose Avenue?
Okay, I guess.
Okay, moving along. Next thing we've got on the agenda, city planner update, is there anything you'd like to?
He's on vacation.
Yeah, he's on vacation, yeah.
Anything you'd like to add?
I'll let him give you guys an update on a lot line adjustment that was given, I don't have the full text right up on that, so we'll have to do it next month. It was a minor, like I said, we don't have any pending applications right now, so.
Okay.